Phil, you good?
Good evening. I'd like to call the March 24th, 2025 Borough Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, specifying the time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy of the annual notice schedules to the official newspapers of the borough, and is on file in the clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Here.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Manko.
Here.
Councilwoman Payne.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignolo.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Here.
Borough Engineer Luke Laskonka.
Here.
Borough Administrator Frederick Carr. Borough Clerk Monica Orlando, present.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence, which will be followed by the salute to the flag? So up first, we have a presentation. Reagan, would you please come up?
Good evening, Mayor and Borough Council. My name is Reagan Zalewski and I'm a seventh grader at school and a cadet Girl Scout for Milltown Troop 80270. I'm working towards obtaining my Silver Award, which is the second highest award in Girl Scouting. The Silver Award requires me to develop a sustainable project for the Milltown community. The Borough Pool has been a fixture in Milltown for decades. My friends and I learned to swim there. There are limited safety precautions for people, especially children, that cannot swim. Water safety is very important to me. When I was a little girl, I was rescued by one of the lifeguards at Borough Pool. I was not wearing a life jacket and struggled to stay above water. I would love to build a life jacket rack at the Borough Pool. I would supply a rack and life jackets based on sponsored donations from the community. There would be no cost to the borough for this project. A life jacket rack is a storage center designed to hold life jackets. I would work with Ms. McGrath, the Recreation Director, to select what type of life jackets would be the best for the pool. I would also hold workshops on life jacket safety to the children who attend Albert Avenue Day Camp during their weekly pool day. Handouts will come from the American Red Cross Longfellow's Wheels Tails Water Safety Program that can be found online, providing the children with handouts, coloring, and activities. I provided a link to their website below. The website materials are free and readily available. I would love to build a life jacket rack for this summer for the Borough Pool. This project will benefit the borough of Milltown and the pool. This project will be completed at no cost to the borough. It would be a great addition to the pool, eating, and the safety of the town's little swimmers, and will also increase water safety and knowledge for the children at Albert Avenue Summer Camp. Thank you so much for your time. Happy swimming.
Reagan, if you want to come back up to the microphone. First of all, congratulations and thank you for doing this for the community. I did speak to Ms. McGrath, and she's 100% behind this project as well. And once it's up and going, you know, you will continue to keep her involved. That would be great. I didn't have any other questions unless any other council members did.
Not a question?
Just one.
Go ahead.
I want to say thank you. I have four sisters, and they're all Girl Scouts, and I buy Girl Scout cookies every year. I look for you guys, and I appreciate what you're doing. That's going to be a wonderful addition. Thank you.
So Reagan, I have one question. If someone wanted to donate, how would they? Or how could they? What's the best way?
I think we might set up like a website.
Okay.
Okay.
An Amazon. Yeah.
Good job. Sounds good. Amazon, Amazon, okay. If there are no other questions, I mean, is there a way we can get this on as a resolution for the next meeting?
If you guys want it on the agenda, we can put that together.
Sounds good.
Excellent. I think this is a great project, and you just never know when you're going to need something to save somebody's life in the water. I know I had that experience, and I thought the person was joking. They popped up and said, "I can't swim," and they went down. And somebody said, "No, she really means it." And she was going under, and it was like 100, I think she was maybe 110 pounds, and it felt like about 500 pounds in the water. Took two of us to drag her out. So it's a very good project.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that you're not only building it but also educating is tremendous. So thank you so much.
Now is the time for public comment, limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, the public portion is limited to the comments only on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There'll be a five-minute time limit set forth by the rules of the council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Steve Gregis, 25 Lincoln Avenue. This is concerning Resolution 2025-140, Budget Introduction. When does the budget actually get approved? Is that going to be done today?
No.
No?
Second meeting in April.
Okay. I just wanted to ask if the end of the year I submitted a proposal to do some work on the museum. I was wondering if that was included in the budget, if you could tell me that or not?
Not at this time, Steve.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Seeing none, I will close audience comments. The following ordinance was introduced on March 10th, 2025, and published in accordance with law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they must do so after the reading. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 241558 by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Electrical Service, Section 22-38, General Service of the Revised General Ordinance of the Borough of Milltown, Section 22-38.3, Service Rates.
May I have a motion in a second, please, to adopt the Ordinance 241558?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Collins. Is there any comments?
Yes, there is. I have something I want to read about. In essence, I'm in agreement as far as the demand fee. I am not, and I'm going to speak about that. I'd like to bring up the electric demand fee that Milltown has been set in stone. As I understand it, the initial turning on the lights in a business such as Home Depot brought the demand fee into being, as the electric surge brings on the need for a large amount of power. The demand fee for businesses, especially small businesses, has put many shop owners in a financial bind that has seen many of them fail. I counted 12 today. 12 vacant stores or business fronts today that are closed out of business. I also have several business owners recently that are close to giving up on their livelihoods. The demand fee now climbing even higher is a main reason. Small business especially is the lifeblood of a town like Milltown. You need a healthy Main Street, and ours is sadly falling short. Empty storefronts, vacant properties such as Whitman Property and the old Michelin Plant Property looking like Berlin 1945, it's a disgrace, and it embarrasses all of us that love Milltown. Why do we want to discourage small business in town? We need them more than they need us. This will be brought up again, and I promise, the first time I spoke here before I was elected, I mentioned this disgraceful Main Street, and nothing has changed. As I said, I will bring this up again very soon. Thank you.
Okay, I will open up the public hearing on Ordinance 241558. Please state your name and address to the record. Comments are limited to this ordinance only. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
No.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Authorization of Payments of Municipal Obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 25-134 by title?
2025-134, authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $2,271,968.38.
You have heard the reading of this resolution, or there isn't any questions? No? May I have a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are to be considered routine in nature, and having been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, they'll be treated on in a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolutions acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, like 2025-139, pull.
Okay. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its March 24th, 2025 meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, 2025-136 through 2025-138. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each were read in its entirety at its March 24th, 2025 meeting and adopted by separate vote.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
We need a motion in a second.
Oh, sorry. Motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-139?
Authorizing shared service agreement curbside recycling services Middlesex County Improvement Authority, 2025 through 2028.
It's a pleasure, Council. Make the motion. Does this resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to figure out, how much money are we going to save going with the county over our one that we have now? Does anybody have an idea?
You use the county now, Council Collins.
What's that?
You have, currently, your agreement is with the county.
Oh, I thought we had a private one.
Because you had a three-year agreement subject to two one-year extensions, which expires the end of this month.
All right, that answers my question.
Seeing no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Reports from elected officials.
No. About budget introduction?
Oh, will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-140?
I'll be reading the entire budget. Summary of current fund section of approved budget. General appropriations, appropriations within caps for municipal purposes, $9,202,809. Appropriations excluded from caps, municipal purposes, $2,654,741.94. Municipal budget of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex for the fiscal year 2025. Be resolved at the following statements of revenues and appropriations that constitute the municipal budget for the year 2025. Be further resolved that said budget be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of April 2025. The governing body, Borough of Milltown, does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year 2025. Yep, so you need a motion in a second.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Reports from elected officials, Council President Zambrana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only report I have tonight is just to send out a thank you to our BA Fred Carr, who's not able to be here with us tonight, and to our CFO Joe Zanga for all their work in putting together and introducing a budget for 2025 on time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have the library agenda here, what's going on at the library. 3:25 is drop-in play at 10:30 a.m., 3:25, Library Book Club, 6 p.m. 3:26, 2 p.m. movie matinee awakenings, 3:27 and 4:01 after-school game on, 3 o'clock. 4:02, movie matinee Peggy Sue Got Married, 2 p.m. 4:05, crochet for beginners, 11 a.m. 4:07, yoga, 9:15, please register. 9:15 a.m. is yoga, please register. 4:07, library concert, Poets of Prairie, 6:30 p.m., please register. 4:08, drop-in play, 10:30 a.m. 4:09, 2 p.m. matinee movie One Eye Jacks. 4:10, Craft Corner, 3 p.m. 4:12, Breakfast Art Club, 10:30 a.m., please register. And 4:12, Read to a Pooch, 12:30 a.m. Storytime with Ms. Sam is offered on Thursdays, 3:27. 4:10 is Babes and Tots at 10:30 and all ages at 11:30. Please call the library at 732-247-2270 if you have any questions. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Manko?
Just a few brief things to mention about the water utility. The meters are still moving forward and being replaced, and this process seems to be going well. Additional to that, I do know that the DPW has moved to having a different testing system, which we're hoping to have better success with. And other than that, things keep moving on. Life is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, but I would like to congratulate Councilman Potter on being a brand-new grandfather.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Poznanski?
Sure. First, again, I want to also thank Joe Zanga for helping us this year and last year. You bailed us out last year, and you're bailing us out again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have a senior report. First, I want to thank the director Debbie Cuddy for twenty-one years of dedicated and loyal service to our valued seniors. She does not get enough recognition and thanks that her continued presence brings. Ms. Cuddy is working with the county for a CD BG or block grant for needs at the senior center. She's trying to get funding for new windows. They're old, leaky, and drafty. There are other items they would like for the center. They come from a different generation, though, and they don't ask for much. They're a concerned and interested minority group and they are taxpayers. They question me often. If I do not have an answer for them, I make sure that I know I will get one, I tell them that I will get one and relay that to them. Right now, they're very concerned with the stored energy system and smart meters. Most of the seniors are lifelong residents, not long ago they were young, as some of us are, and vibrant like you. Please give them and your own family, seniors, the respect that they have earned and deserve. For DPW report, I'd like to thank Ralph Jaznawski for his twenty-eight years of hard work and leadership, never asking one of his men to do something that he wouldn't do himself because he has, starting with, starting his career at the back of a garbage truck. I have met and spoken with Ralph at his office and at the old DPW grounds. I asked him, as I did last year, when time permits, if his people can keep chipping away at the site so citizens and taxpayers feel they're seeing something being done for them with their hard-earned tax dollars. The idea is to keep upgrading the site so that at some point it will no longer be the go-to junkyard and you deserve to be in a better state than it is now. And also, I'm sorry, I was wrong last meeting, the heat in the DPW had not been repaired as I expected, as I thought it was. More problems arose. Fortunately, warmer weather is upon us and heating is not needed, but air conditioning season will be up here and we'll keep our fingers crossed. And there is no MHPC report tonight. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Milltown Recreation Department, currently there are seventy people attending tonight's event at the New Jersey Devils game. Hope they're having fun. Youth spring registrations are open. Please visit Community Pass to register. We're still accepting seasonal employment applications. These can be found under the forms on the Milltown website. It's a fillable application, so please complete it online and mail it to km McGrath at milltownborough.com. Registration for Albert and Albert Duke Camp and pool memberships will begin in mid-April. Adult softball registration has recently opened. Please register on Community Pass. The spring chess program will run from March thirty-first to April twenty-eighth. Please register now so you don't miss out. From the Milltown Planning Board, the next meeting is scheduled for April second. And from the Milltown Fourth of July Organization, we'd like to extend our heartfelt thanks to everyone who attended and supported the Celebrity Bartender Event this past Saturday. Your presence and enthusiasm made the event a success. Special thanks to our sponsors, Maria's, Mike's Country Market, Garden State Bar, Edible Arrangements, and the American Legion Post Twenty-Five. Your generous contributions are greatly appreciated and played a significant role in making this event possible. Finally, congratulations to our twenty-two-five grand marshal, former fire chief, councilman, council president, and current Milltown historian, Brian Hardo. We're honored to have Brian as our grand marshal for our hundredth year celebration. His dedication and service to our community are truly commendable. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports from Borough Professionals, Mr. Vignola?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McLeone or Puskalka?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items tonight. The first is an update on the water meter replacement project. To date, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine meters have been replaced. That's an additional two-hundred-and-sixty-eight since the March tenth meeting report. Twenty-five others are being validated, thirty-three are incomplete, and one-hundred-and-forty-seven are currently scheduled. Secondly, with regard to the Foch Avenue improvements, we're pleased to report that the base mapping has been completed and will be reaching out to Ralph Jaznawski of the Public Works to schedule a committee meeting to go over the scope of that project. And that's all we have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The only thing I have is for anyone who's participating in the unofficial townwide garage sale, although I'm not in the office daily, there are permits and envelopes for you to put your application in, your five-dollar fee. Please put exact cash in there or check. If you leave it in the Dropbox, I'll be in the office twice a week processing the permits. And since I won't be giving them to you right away, I am, I offer to David, who organizes this unofficial thing, that I will email him a list of everybody once a week who has applied for a permit so that you guys can be on the list. And that's all that I have for my report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any other business to bring before council?
Yes. In regards to the Schwinden property, now that the Schwinden Committee is up and running, have they decided what is happening with the grounds as the DPW spring cleaning is ready to commence? And they'll be doing the usual trimming, clearing brush, mowing, et cetera. Workers are expecting direction. As I am the liaison to DPW, I'm sure I will be informed so I may relay information forward.
The committee, we don't have members yet. I've been reaching out, that was one of my comments. Still waiting for more participants from the residents to sign up and fill out their leadership form so we can get them added to the committee.
As you say, at this point, what you have is you've authorized the creation of the committee, but you haven't populated it yet. I know the mayor had asked the clerk to modify the citizen leadership form to include the ability to request membership on that subcommittee, but I don't know where we stand with.
It was done the day I was requested to post.
No, no, I know it was done. I was, wow. I don't know where we stand with people applying to be members. Sorry to let you know.
We only have one resident and one councilman that showed interest so far. All right. Does any member of council have any new business to bring before council?
I do. It's in regards to the battery, energy storage system. I'd like to ask Lou and Mike if you want to participate in it, because I have some questions and I have some statements. Does the power station need to be upgraded to deal with the battery packs?
No, it does not.
Okay. How do you see me prepared to deal with the fire suppression in the event of a breakout?
The, there's a couple of things. There's suppression system been specified inside the battery system, so it comes contained and we've also proposed a wall behind the units where they're close to the property.
The only reason I have a lot of things to ask is I've done a lot of research on it. And do you know there's a place in California during the wildfires, they also had a plant, Moss Landing? Do you know about that?
I'm not familiar, but we know that the batteries have a potential issue with regard to fires. And when we checked into it, this particular product that we specified has an internal suppression system that has NFPA rating and there's a requirement in our bid documents and the bid docs were prepared to have that meet all the current criteria.
Okay.
And the wall itself is a fire-rated wall to some extent. It's comparable to someone that's out there now.
I mean, I know you're going to do diligence with it, but the fire out there, it was acres and it was the largest, it was the largest plant, that type of facility, and it handled over three million people. And it was a huge fire.
Your system's much smaller than that, but we also recognize the issue. It's something that's came up very early on in discussions.
Because they actually couldn't do anything with it. The only thing they could do was monitor it because, you know, it gave off poisonous gases, fumes.
That's right. Potentially, yes.
Sure.
Your battery system, though, is much smaller than that. Still the same concerns and it's inherent in the system to have that suppression system.
And the reason, and I looked into this because I feel like I need to do this. I can't just, I can't just sign off and vote on it. And there's good and bad in regards to that, and I know you know that, but I'd be remiss if I didn't look into all that, especially bring it up to here, bring it up here because I think that everyone up on council should do their best to research this also before they get a chance to vote on it.
Remember, we designed the substation ourselves, not our firm, and there's many different protections in that whole system and we feel that you're protected here both at the front of the unit and at the back.
Okay.
If I could add on to that, councilman, I reached out to our safety representative for the JIF regarding it, and once it's in place, there'll be extra safety training for the fire department and for other responders.
Okay. Because I do have that in my other questions here. Did you do, did you do some of the work in South River? Because I know they have a system there.
We have not, our office is the engineer in South River. We did some of the site work review, but not really the direct battery. We've been more involved in your project in South River.
Okay. Because I did, I checked out the system. It's much larger than it would be here, I know that.
And we too are over there, we did walk the site, have our staff, have our electrical engineer over there, and yes, it's much bigger than you have, but their town is much bigger than yours.
Yeah. Okay. Some things may seem redundant, but would it make sense to invite representatives of Milltown Fire Department to determine their degree of readiness in handling a lithium-ion fire?
Well, I think that your clerk just indicated that the JIF recommended. We did the same thing with the sub when we actually commenced the substation. All those folks were brought in, the people that made the decisions, and were shown the entire system, and they'll be done that way just also.
Would you know if they have that kind of training, if they've had that kind of training?
With the substation, yes, with the batteries, probably not. But that doesn't mean they haven't had it somewhere else.
Sure.
And remember, your system is not really owned by you. This is a system that's going to be owned by the company that's providing the service, so that's their requirement and responsibility to maintain these also.
Okay. Fire would present health, environmental, and structural hazards. Are you aware to the extent of repercussions it could create?
I think that this particular installation is going to be protected because of the retaining wall we recommend put along behind it. And I think that under normal circumstances, you have to be very careful with these types of units and installations. But I think, if you remember, if you go to the substation, you'll see that there's a very high wall, much like a sound wall on this project. That's a combination wall or suggestion and recommended plans that that be put in, both for sound and for fire protection protection.
And everything I'm bringing up here, it's not to be an alarmist, but I think, I think people have to beware. And actually, there's someone at the senior center had some concerns and what I told him is watch the meeting. Actually, I told him to come to the meeting tonight and he said he didn't really want to do that. I said, please watch, because I'm going to bring up your part of his question that I really looked into it.
And remember, this big document set up as a performance specification, so the required supplier will ultimately decide he has to provide the proofs and certifications to meet that statement.
Okay. As a fire would present toxic gases, the chemicals released would be, among others, hydrogen fluoride, hydrochloric acid, carbon monoxide. Soil and water testing would have to be done to determine safety for the residents. And, okay, that's first.
The units specified are contained all in a box, so that, you know, the off-gases that may occur. When a fire occurs, you can't always predict it, but in this particular design spec has been set up to provide the best protection you can get to it. And make no mistake, just like the substation, there's always concerns with this type of equipment.
Sure. No, I've read all the good things about them, but I also, so I had to put it together the best way I thought I should, felt like I should present here tonight. So like I said, and I'm not an alarmist and I don't want to scare myself either, but then I'm going to go into this. Salas O'Brien, I know that they're the people, Joe, in your town. Let's see. It's a lithium-based technology allows us to capture energy during the low-cost times when energy surplus is available. And I know Joe knows all about this, but I'm sure people here don't.
Yes, he does, he's very good.
Yeah, but I figured out the people here don't, so that's why I'm saying this. But it takes, when the energy surplus is available, then discharge the stored energy during the peak usage hours when energy costs rise. We have two years, which the energy cost as of now may peak, and then the energy we buy will hopefully be accessible at a more reasonable cost to us. However, the energy situation today is not what it was a few months ago, yet for the sake of Milltown residents, the battery packs are a possible viable option, which we're determining. But then I want to bring up the Moss Landing fire. Okay, so we talked about, I have one question, we already talked about. But the fire in Moss Landing, California, it's in rural area in Monterey. Fire started on January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Like I said, it was overshadowed by all the other wildfires. It's a gigantic facility serving over three million residential and non-residential government use users. The likely reason for the fires is overheating of the lithium-ion batteries. And the lithium-ion batteries are energy-dense and contain electrolytes, both are highly flammable. I'm sure you know all this. Overcharging non-compliant charging equipment, overheating, exposure to heat or extreme temperatures can cause these fire hazards. We would have to make sure that the system is meticulously observed and maintained and fire suppression readiness and vigilance is maintained. Also, another question, do you know about thermal runaway?
I've heard of it. This particular project is, again, is monitored and there's controls so that doesn't happen.
Sure.
And again, remember, you're basically bringing in an outside operator operating the system. It's Milltown's responsibility to make sure they do what they're required to, and that's where, hey, you're going to have folks, you have your own electrical superintendent, you are certainly capable of watching.
Sure. But I'm going to explain what the thermal runaway is. It's the charging lithium-ion batteries beyond capacity brings up excessive heat buildup, which leads to thermal runaway. Also, the high temperatures destabilize the chemical structure of the battery leading to thermal runaway, which could lead to fire explosion. And the owner of the, the owner of the energy storage site in California is called Vistra. Have you ever heard of them? They're very big. Over a thousand people and animals were evacuated. The environmental studies will take, will take years to measure the full impact of the devastating fires, considering all the chemical components. You'll look at this one. The state officials claim no ill effects will come of the disaster and let the residents return to their homes the next day.
Isn't it, Councilment Poznanski, this fire occurred from the outside, there was a wildfire outside the back.
No, that's not how it started.
I thought that's how it started.
It's not how it started.
But let me just tell you, you have a suppression system inside the unit and a cooling system to go through and keep the control. So it, what's specified is the best that's available today in the market. That's what you've specified, that's what you're requiring. Can things happen? Yes, they can.
The fire was separate from the wildfires. It was a heat buildup.
I thought it was caused by the wildfire. That's my.
Thank you, then.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're having the environmental meeting at seven-thirty PM on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, and I'll mention, if with your approval, ready openings if they want to get on the Schwinden Committee. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Our new business, open to the public. Public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder, under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input quart of the meeting shall be limited to five minutes and may, after other speakers have finished, may be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period. Someone raises their hand, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Steve Gregus, twenty-five Lincoln Avenue. First thing, I'm definitely still interested in joining that Schwinden Committee. I just have to, I'm not a computer, I just have to get online and fill out the.
I'll give you a paper application.
Oh, okay. Thanks, I appreciate it. Second, last month, I had come in front of council and asked permission to do a small beautification project at the Parkland Avenue Tennis Courts and, actually, I had talked to you last council meeting about it.
We did, I just, it's in the works. There's a couple of questions that I had for, that I need to.
Oh, okay. So maybe, maybe next meeting it could be addressed?
Yeah, there's been a couple of other things that came up, but I can certainly try to, I apologize.
All right, no, no, no problem, okay, thanks.
But it is important, so.
Okay, thank you. Last, I just want to talk a little bit about the flooding problem at Mill Pond. I guess about five years ago, Spotswood met with the county and they came up with remediation plan and to fix the flooding problem at Devoe Lake. And I would like to see the town reach out to the county, maybe invite a county engineer here and open up a meeting with the public. And maybe we can come up with some remediation plans to fix the flooding at Mill Pond, because it's something that really has to be addressed. You know, the flood problem is something that's occurring a lot more often. And we just got to do something. If we can at least open up a dialogue with the county, maybe we can come up with something. You know, if you go back to when I was a kid back in the 60s, the 70s, and I keep hearing they can't do this, but years ago, the lake was dredged. They actually dredged it all the way down to the 50-foot trestle. And back then, you didn't see all the vegetation along here on the rescue squad side like you do now. And a lot of people may not know this, but when the trolley service went out of, went out of business and they tore down the old trolley barn, they threw debris in the lake, right at the base of the falls. So that's just, the falls is just, it's so shallow there, like when we have a drought. I mean, there's, there's got to be like a number of different things we can do. But if we can open up a dialogue with the county, like I said, if we can invite somebody here, invite the public here, maybe we can come up with a plan. So just thanks, but to maybe consider something like that, so, thank you.
Courtney Williams Scolo, 318 Clay Street. Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the community. I'm coming here tonight as the Chair of the Human Relations Committee, and I am wanting to read two statements that we have prepared as a committee in recognition of our new initiative of being able to bring awareness to the lesser-known observances and holidays throughout the year and hoping to really bring that and elevate that in our community. So, let's start. The members of the Human Relations Committee would like to recognize March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and March 25th as the International Day of Remembrance of the Victims of Slavery and the Transatlantic Slave Trade. Developmental Disabilities Month is a time to celebrate inclusion, advocate for equity, and amplify the voices of individuals with developmental disabilities. It's an opportunity to challenge misconceptions, promote understanding, and support a society where everyone can thrive. As a community, we hope to commit to learning, listening, and fostering a more inclusive world to keep in mind as we build, as we make sustainable changes in the town and keep in mind that we need to consider all members of our community as we make those changes. A recommendation for anybody wanting to learn more about this is, it's called Far From a Treat by Andrew Solomon. It's a wonderful book and as well as a movie. It's really, really enlightening. It's about from 2012, and it follows many different families dealing with developmental disabilities and their school-aged children, and I really recommend that for anybody. Additionally, the International Day of Remembrance of the Victims of Slav, of Slavery and the Transatlantic Slave Trade established by the UN in 2007 serves as a solemn occasion to honor the memory of the millions of women and children, men, women, and children who suffered and perished as a result of the brutal transatlantic slave trade. For over four centuries, millions of Africans were forcibly taken to the homeland's traffic, from their homelands trafficked across the Atlantic and sub, and subject to unimaginable cruelty and exploitation. This forced displacement enriched, enriched by imperial powers and entrenched false narratives of white supremacy and radical inferiority. As a community committed to justice, equality, and human dignity, we must not view this remembrance as just a reflection of the past, but of the future. The legacies of slavery remain present in, in our community and in our world today. Recognizing this history is an essential step forward as dismantling the structures that keep us divided. We encourage all members of our community to use this day to encourage a meaningful dialogue, educate, educate, and take, and take up action. Let us reaffirm our commitment to equity and inclusion, ensuring that the injustices of the past inform the policies and practices that shape our future. A list of books, movies, and podcasts are Bearakun, The Last Black Slave Cargo by Zora Neale Hurston. I have it here today. It is actually the story of the last man of the last slave ship to ever come to America, written by Zora Neale Hurston, is her last book. And it's a fascinating read, just talking about that. Additionally, you can listen to Throughline, it's a podcast by NPR. And you can also watch the PBS documentary, The African Americans, Many Rivers to Cross, by Henry Louis Gates. I really encourage everybody wanting to know more about Just Not This List, but any other list, to talk with the Milltown Library, the East Brunswick Public Library. They have tons of materials on both of these subjects. And we've talked to them, and they're really open and happy to recommend anything that they have. Or if you, they do not have it, to source it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Eisenberger, 99 JFK Drive. I have a question, because I keep coming across the problem. Everybody keeps referring to our attic storage area up there with stuff in there, going back years. Does anybody have any idea what's up there?
Stuff, lots of stuff.
Going back how far, et cetera?
Far. I wish I could give you a better answer. I, the only, the only time I went up there was a year and a half ago with Cable TV's Russ Ryan Barna to look at, categorize, list, and throw out equipment that was just sitting there and had been donated, so. But there's a lot of stuff up there.
It's documents, it's everything.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the condition of it. Like I said, because we're running across that with a lot of things. And, you know, you go through it at home in your attic. You keep something in the attic, it's going to disintegrate. And not knowing what's up there, that really concerns me. I'd love to know what's up there.
It's not a matter of not knowing what's up there. I mean, they've been through several, several clerks since Mike Januska left. And with records retention, there's a lot of boxes up there from different departments, and there's different retention schedules. And I think through the several clerks that we've had over the past couple of years, it hasn't been as easy to keep organized. One of the projects that I have been working on, I'm still working on, is getting it organized. Even though I'm still only here part-time, I've been working with Ralph from DPW, and we've just gotten all the tax duplicate books, which are permanent records that can never be destroyed. And they're wrapped, and they're going to be going down to the county storage system to make more room up there to work. So my goal is, as I'm still here, to keep working through that. But as you know, I'm not here very much, and there's a lot up there. And there's also a lot up there that is eligible for destruction, but nobody ever took the time to get around to do it. So prior to Mary resigning in January, we had started a system, and there's boxes that are marked for destruction. But I only have so many hours in a day, and I'm doing my best to get through the records up there as best as I can. But I also can't account for records that were here long, you know, I, I, there's stuff that's up there. There's some boxes that are labeled correctly. There's some boxes that, you know, need to be relabeled, and that's part of the project that we've been working on.
So is there going to be a list of what is there, though? What paperwork and stuff? Because you, you're saying stuff's going to get destroyed. Might not be valuable to whoever's looking at it.
Well, when I say destroyed, that, when I say destroyed, it's within the, you have to get it approved by the state. I can't just go up there and start shredding documents. There's, there are certain records, and there's a retention schedule state, set in by the State Division of Treasury that oversees records retention. And prior to anything being shredded or disposed of, you have to put in for approval. I could tell you right now, one thing that we did recently was, dog licenses are three years. So after three years, you can get for destruction. So I was able to get rid of about eight to 10 years of old dog license documents that were, didn't have to be sitting around anymore. But what happens is you enter the documents, and you, there's certain record series for them. You enter that in, there's a certain retention. And then once I send that to the state, the state has to review it, give me permission, and then tell me that I can destroy it. Same thing with any record that's here. But there's things like ordinances, minutes, original resolutions, that can't be destroyed. But, you know, personnel is 40 years. There are certain things that have to be kept.
I agree with that, that's fine. But like ordinance and stuff, like you said, when it goes to the state then, to be archived.
No, it does not go to the state to be archived. I go to the state to get permission to destroy it if it's within, if, if it's in the years that it says it no longer needs to be retained anymore.
Not to destroy it, the stuff that's going to be archived. There is an itemized list each year for what's in that box that can be operated by a citizen through the archives.
So I'm not sure what archives you're talking about, what, what I'm working on. Don't get frustrated with me, I'm trying to explain the process. Just because it's not the way that you like it, doesn't mean that it's wrong.
No, no, I've, I've read, I've read the state rules, and that's why I'm.
That's fine, but there, there are, again, we've been through several clerks, and it, there's a lot of documents up there. So I am one person that can get up there in the short time that I'm here to try and organize what's in there. There's also all the tax and utility, that takes up the majority of it, all their statements, payroll, invoices, contracts, all the things that you can think of, you know, bids and proposals when they go out. We have to hold that for a certain amount of time. What's nice is we're going digital with a lot of things. So, you know, for 2025's professionals, I have everything on a USB drive, and it's not big boxes of papers taking things up. So I have somewhat of a list, as I'm slowly going through it. But my list is more of the stuff that I have found that's passed its retention, and it's a list of things that I'm entering into state database to get approval for destruction. Because my first goal was getting those tax duplicate books out, which was three pallets worth of stuff, which opened up a ton of shelving. My next one is the project that, again, Mary and I worked on before she left, and taking those documents that we, we have earmarked that are able to be destroyed, get those out of there. And then we can start looking at all these other boxes and seeing, are they labeled correctly? Is this from 20 years ago? Is it something that has to be kept forever? But it's a very arduous process, and.
I get that, but you touched on deeds. So the deeds are up there.
There, there is a bar, a box marked easements and deeds. I can't, I, obviously, if they're, they're permanent, they're there. It's a matter of what box are they in and how were they filed by the previous clerk? I know my filing system, you know, but I would then have to look. Like I brought down two boxes of deeds, I don't know, three weeks ago, and, and it was just kind of in alphabetical order, you know, and, and so.
Okay, because.
When you request something, if you want to operate it, that's fine, but you, you know, if it's going to take a while, it'll be an extension, and there may be things like special fees charged, because that's time and research and everything else, and that's all part of the Oprah stuff.
That's fine. But Mill Pond was brought up again tonight, and I'm going to bring it up tonight. And I'm going to ask, it's going to be a question to the council, professionals that are in this room tonight. Does anybody disagree that Mill Pond is owned by Mr. Berger and family?
You can ask Peter about that.
By Peter?
I can, I can answer that I don't know who owns Mill Pond. So I, I know that according to the Tax Office, the borough does. I know that according to a record owner's search, it's owned by, I believe, two different entities. But frankly, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not a title service, so.
That's, that's enough for me tonight, I appreciate it.
Have you reached out to the county?
Seeing no further public comments. Does any member of council have anything that they would like to bring up at this time?
For council comments, yes. First, I'd like to recognize a friend of mine, he's Councilman Ken Graves from Middlesex. He's, he wanted to come here and observe. This is about our BA. I appreciate that our former BA has agreed to stay on. Though on a part-time basis, this however, has created a dilemma for me, as I do have concerns and questions that the BA can answer. And as councilman, I have a right to converse with him. If he cannot be here for council meetings, considering he is employed elsewhere, can we accommodate him until a suitable replacement is found? Can we move our meetings to Tuesday if that works for him? If, and he could attend? Would anybody be interested in possibly changing our, our time temporarily?
No, because your clerk wouldn't be able to do it. Sorry.
Well, you know, the, the reason I bring this up is because there are things that are happening that I know about or I see. And I, I, I sent an email to, to Fred, I get a one-word answer. But there's things that I would like to talk to him about, and when he's here, I can bring this up. But aside from that, he has no time for us. He's very, he's very part-time, so I'll continue.
I have to say I disagree with that.
But, but I'm in a different position than you are.
But he's not very part-time, he's very responsive to emails, just as I are. We, we both are working other full-time careers and staying on to help.
Continue with its comments, and then we can go from there. Go ahead, Karen.
I appreciate that you're defending him, Monica. I'm not, I'm not, okay. There was a grant issued for plants. I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get some clarity, and I cannot get it if I can't get it from Fred. And I'm going to continue. There was a grant issued for the senior center for plants and tools. Some of the plants were placed in the ground, many were not, and I have proof because I have pictures. There, there were and are plants in pots in a wagon, tools were left all over the grounds. I saw pots flying across the parking lot, and I have pictures. My question would be, who is overseeing the taxpayer-funded grant? Too many people don't understand that grant money comes from you, the taxpayers. I'm the liaison to the senior center, and people come to me with their issues, and I do address the issues. Also, the CDBG grant. For the second year in a row, I've gone to the BA in February to ask him to apply for the CDBG grant, block grant, for needs at the senior center. The only thing that was received last year was a partial coverage of the director's salary to free room on the budget. This year, the grant was due to be filed on February 14th. However, on March 15th, the BA emailed the director to relay to her that she was now responsible for submitting the grant. When it's not generally done by her, she's never done a grant. She's quite capable, filled out, and submitted the grant to the county. She asked me to look at it, and I saw that there was no information to go by. I do not see the senior center receiving any money, any grant money this year. I've been told they have not received any grant money for a few years. I care very much to help the forgotten men and women at the senior center. The situation disheartens me. My all hope is that a new qualified BA will be found who can handle issues as they arise. Thank you.
If I can step in that they have received funds, and I can print out the CDBG things that they have received over the past couple of years. There has been money that has been allocated only for the senior center.
What, for what? Because I, I, I went to Fred last year, and, and nothing, and anything that I asked for was not, was not given to them. So I would like to see what you do have.
I will, I will email you copies.
Okay.
I can say that, to that, some of the, the plantings that were done, I know that some of that was done through environmental, or sorry, through, through the green team. And I know some of the Girl Scouts had worked on that. And I believe so like that, that cart and some of the other items that are there or that were kind of hidden on that bench were left there because there is apparently more work that is expected to be done.
I, I can show you, I can show you the wagon, and it's full of plants, dead plants. There are plants sitting in pots. There are, there are pots running, going across the parking lot, and I do have pictures. So if anybody wants to see that, you're more than welcome. I didn't go looking for trouble there, trouble came to me.
Oh, no, I was just saying that.
No, no, I'm telling you, I'm just saying that.
But the plants, I'm sure that, there's somebody we could probably find an answer for.
Well, I, if you go there, you'll see the answer, you'll see them all there.
Do you have anything, Councilman Collins?
I'd just like to thank our professionals that are filling in here part-time, Joe and Monica and Fred, because thank goodness you're doing, you know, double duty for us in Milltown. We really appreciate it, and a lot of, at least we do up here as the council, I know about the residents, but I think most of them appreciate you filling in for us, and you're doing a great job, so I'd just like to say thank you.
I would like to make a comment and echo John's sentiments in that, you know, being new to the council, my experience with working with our professionals, they do an outstanding job. And I think as a council, we need to trust their professional judgment and not constantly question their expertise. And I find it disappointing that that happens on a regular basis, because we are only as efficient as a council and mayor as they are at running the borough.
I'd like to close council comments. I only have a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Potter again. Thank you for, for being the grandfather. I would like to personally congratulate Brian Hardo as being selected as the Grand Marshal. Congratulations, and thank you for being such a great part of Milltown. Mr. McLean, quick question for the Devoe Lake. Did CME engineer that, or no?
Yes, we did.
Did, was the, was that a county project, or no?
Municipal project.
It was municipal?
It was a municipal project.
Did the county support it at all, or no?
I think there was some county support on the financing.
What is that? Okay. Thank you.
When that's done through the county, I'm sorry, when that's done through the county, because it involves water, it's environmental, it's watershed, is that DEP, or what, what is?
Well, DEP permits required every time you do a red project. Large permit, large permitting after, I'm not going through one right now, about a year or two. But, yes, there's a permitting, was done through the town. County may provide some funding through the open space fund. The bulk of it was done through the town.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-141, please?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body will discuss pending litigation, bless you. And whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Collins. Is there any comments?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski?
Aye.